Tonight is October 19th. The time is 6:03. And this is the Acushnet playing board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on YouTube. We are on Zoom. I'm sure we're on cable somewhere. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting, please?
Motion to open, second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a full board tonight. Can we introduce ourselves?
Dave Wigan, member.
Steve Boucher, member.
Mark France, our chairman.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
Brian DeChambeau, member.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is we've got to get through some past meeting minutes. Paul sent everybody, let's start with the August 10th meeting minutes. Everybody have an opportunity to read through these. Dave, you were...
Dave, you were...
Can everybody on Zoom...
Can everybody on Zoom?
Mute yourself.
Mute yourself.
That's me.
That's an internal problem.
All right. I don't hear it anymore, so maybe it fixed itself. Dave, you weren't here for August 10th?
I abstained.
You can abstain. Did everybody else have a chance to read August 10th meeting minutes?
I did.
Any questions, issues?
With your separate...
I make a motion to accept the August 10th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
On the favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Number four.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, this was four up. And how about the September 21st meeting minutes? It was a full board that meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Yeah, it's working.
We have a motion?
Second down.
You have a second, on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
I want to read what was in the article, in the newspaper article for the advertising. "This hybrid meeting is being held in accordance with the Acushnet general bylaws, zoning article eight, section 3.4 and 3.5. Site plan review and solar special permit modification plan entitled Lambert Street Access Road issued June 6, 2023 to process a modification for a site plan review and special permit for a 7.5-megawatt solar array proposed by Sincarfa Park Drive LLC. The engineer is Weston Sampson. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the clerk's office, Pineways Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours." The way this will go tonight is representative from Sincarfa will come up and go through their spiel. The board will ask the questions. When the board is done, I'll then go to residents and Zoom. Can you please introduce yourself?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jesse O'Donnell. I'm an engineer with Weston and Sampson, representing the project applicant tonight, Sincarfa Capital, on behalf of a proposed site plan review application and special permit modification. This is pertaining to a proposed access driveway to a previously approved solar development north of Park Drive in town. So to start tonight, I'd like to discuss a bit of project history behind that previously approved solar development, and then I'll get into the present item, which is the proposed access driveway to the development. So the approved solar development was approved in 2021. We received Planning Board and Conservation Commission approvals in 2021. The development spanned about 22 acres of array north of Park Drive in town. And shortly after we received the approvals in 2021, we received legal disputes from Project of Butters about the viability of Brooks Avenue as a viable access to the site. We had originally proposed access to the solar development from Brooks Avenue, which is a paper road, and we had proposed a gravel driveway north, fronting up of Park Drive, to the solar development. So with those legal disputes in mind, we set out, following the approvals, to find any alternative access routes to the site. And in doing so, we arrived at the present item tonight, which I'd like to present, which is the proposed Lambert Street access driveway. Now, the original Brooks Avenue driveway was proposed in yellow here on the board, and we have on the plan in pink the Lambert Street alternative, which we are presenting for approval tonight. So I'll flip the board here. We're going to zoom in a bit more on the Lambert Street access driveway. Lambert Street is running north-south on the plan, on the westerly side here, and our proposed work is just north of that. So the goal with this Lambert Street access driveway is to extend the dead-end right-of-way. Currently, Lambert Street exists as a paved dead-end right-of-way on the northerly side. We would propose to extend that through the public way about 320 feet north to the frontage of the block containing the proposed solar development. The proposed driveway would be about 20 feet wide of gravel aggregate material. In proposing the 320-foot-long gravel driveway, we would be proposing to impact about 3,400 square feet of bordering vegetated wetland. We have received an approval from the Conservation Commission last month in September. The Conservation Commission voted to approve the Lambert Street access driveway portion of this project and issued in late September an order of conditions accordingly. In terms of the planning board feedback we've received over the past summer/fall period, we have improved the plans to be a bit more legible with some of the hatching and shading. We've doubled the length of the proposed stabilized construction entrance from 50 feet to 100 feet to really minimize the amount of sediment trap out onto the nearby neighborhood streets. And lastly, we've prepared a proposed traffic management plan, which was requested by the planning board at the previous meeting, and we have submitted that newly-prepared traffic management plan tonight. We solicited feedback from the DPW, from the fire department, and from the police department in preparing the plan. And one item I'd like to note on the plan is that the proposed delivery times for construction vehicles do not conflict with the bus schedules. We looked at the bus schedules to make sure that our delivery times would fall outside of the windows of buses moving through the neighborhood in the morning and in the afternoon. So with that said, I'd like to open up and answer any questions that the board may have.
This is a copy of a placard that you're going to have on the road to educate the drivers on which way to go and...
Exactly. Yeah, so on the plan, you can see that we have kind of an orange on the top right. We have a legend. The top item in that legend is the location of the signs that we're proposing to inform the truck drivers on where to go. The actual route to the site coming from the north is highlighted in like a red-orange color along the roadway on the plan. So you can see along that route, we have four locations where the proposed signs would be located on street posts or web utility poles. And the detail of the actual sign has been provided, as you just indicated.
We did hear back from the police chief and the fire chief and DPW. DPW is just going to basically abstain and go with whatever the police and fire recommend. Chief Farland did email back and basically says, "I just did a drive through, I just did a drive with our ladder truck. Some of the turns are tight, so with a 53- to 60-foot trailer, it may be difficult. I do like that it's the shortest and most direct route, but those roads in the neighborhood are not all that wide." That was Chief Farland's comment. Police Chief Richmond also replied. "I have reviewed the proposed traffic plan. I find it to be well thought out and minimally evasive to the residents and school bus traffic in the area. A few things, a few things to consider, though. The area is very residential, underlined 'very', while the streets access, while the streets accessing the area are of regulation dimension, traffic is extremely sparse. As such, the residents will be very aware of vehicles going to and from the project. I ask that the drivers remain mindful of that in regards to their speed and maneuvering turns, especially in larger vehicles." I just wanted that in for the record. Gentlemen, any questions?
Is there any speed when it's posted, going through there?
Good question. I did drive it the other day, but I did not notice, to be honest with you.
There's really not much of a place to get up much at any speed.
Yeah.
No, I know. You're pretty much always turning.
Yeah.
Did, I have a question.
Please.
Did you take a look at the half-end turns? It looks like three of them. You know, whether there are any issues making the turn without having to go off pavement with the trucks?
Yeah, I mean, with the streets being regulation dimension, we assume that it will be a viable route for, for the design trucks. I think the idea is that if the trucks early on in construction find any issues or if there are any comments about, about the radii of the truck turns, we could be flexible in trying to figure out a way to, you know, change different design vehicles accessing the site, to just make that approach, to be as flexible as we can with respect to the community around the neighborhood. So that's the extent to which we looked at the matter.
It's a good idea, because if your trucks start driving over people's yards and people start complaining, then they'll just kind of shut you down quickly. So it's a good idea to be flexible like that.
Sure.
I think we should make a condition of approval, one of the conditions, such that any damage beyond the pavement, whether it's in a public way or private property, is to be corrected when they're done.
Okay.
I would agree with that. Otherwise, I, this is what we asked for.
Yeah.
You know, a direct traffic route, you know. Signs put up, that's great. It is the most direct route. This is a better entrance than the other entrance. I don't think they could have gotten any other entrance, whether being narrowed down to 20 feet. Plus, they would have had to travel twice the distance to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
They have conservation approval. They have a lot of permitting or, you know, they got a big long path through MIPA, which will maybe further, you know, bring up more issues, I don't know. I guess in general, you comfortable moving on from us and knowing that MIPA might change something to the MIPA process?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of preparing and soon to be submitting the environmental notification form on behalf of the MIPA process. So, yeah, we would be comfortable certainly with, with your blessing tonight, moving on to the state and federal approvals that we have awaiting us.
Have you started the federal approval for the wetland?
Yeah, that's, that's the Army Corps approval. We've, we haven't submitted it, but we're on the verge of submitting that in the next few weeks as well.
I guess, I mean, my only comment would be that I would, I would look at a condition that prior to construction starting, that the police chief and the fire chief be given a phone number of a representative from Sincarfa, who can be contacted if there is a problem with the trucks.
Okay.
We'll, the town will need somebody to contact and be responsible for marshaling the problems that there might be.
Okay. We have Graham from Sincarfa here tonight.
As long as, as long, you know, people change, things change, different people get in charge of construction. As long as Sincarfa gives the, the police chief is good enough. I mean, gives a police chief a phone number of a person to contact if there's a problem with the trucking, either truckers running over people's property or not obeying the route that's been designated. I mean, that's, that's really my only comment, because the police chief will need somebody that he can call if there's a problem.
I will say that Sincarfa has been very willing to work with us. They've been going back and forth with Paul. Any questions, anything we ask of them, they have been very, what's the word I'm looking for? Good to work with, so I will say that. Anybody in the audience?
Do you have one more thing to say?
Oh, please.
Just a recommendation that you take the videos and quick photography of the existing conditions along that truck route running through that neighborhood, just to protect everybody's interest.
There'll be a pre-construction, there'll be a pre-construction video.
Okay.
Document that we've done this before, so this is normal course of business. We're okay with providing a contact directly to Sincarfa to deal with any issues should they arise, so.
Very good. So the police chief and the fire chief, and I know that he didn't want to really make many comments, but him and I, they're all, they've seen this?
Yes.
Okay.
Members, if you have any, members of the audience, if you have any questions, concerns, please stand up, approach the podium, introduce yourselves, and ask the questions. Wherever you're comfortable, just introduce yourself.
Kathy Murray, Lambert Street. And actually, I have several questions, but my first one would be, how many panels will be in this?
It's seven megawatts, hey? Seven and a half megawatts, sorry. Is it on the plan?
Let's see if I have it on the overall plan here. Try to tear off one of these plans and see if we have the data. I believe so. It is on sheet 101. Roughly 16,000?
16,000.
Yeah, just about.
Okay, so that's perfect. So I just want the record to reflect what this is going to go do to this neighborhood. And I certainly understand there's no stopping this, because this is the state wants, but I want people to know what this project is going to do. So in a court case, the proponent, so this is good information, submitted the information of what the impacts were. This is for a one-megawatt solar array with 3,916 panels. For six months was the estimate. So it's a total of 3,900 heavy truck trips, 32 maximum trips per day when clearing, and at least 15 for installation of the panels. So I, if you want to, I only multiplied it by five, but that would be a total of, and so that also for this solar array, which I, like I said, I didn't know how many panels there would be, but that's a total of 19,500 heavy truck trips through this very old residential neighborhood. That could be up to 170, max, 160, I'm sorry, maximum trips per day for the clearing of the land and 75 per day for the installation of the panels. So I don't know, I mean, if they're going to use X amount of trucks per day, so maybe those figures per day are maybe a little inflated, but certainly that 19,000 is not inflated. So I want the record to show that, that this is what is being done to this neighborhood. And I just wanted to, if it was okay with the board, I'd like to submit some pictures of the road. This, this is just the damage that the, the development down the street, the Brook Estates, has already done to the road to Park Drive, so if that would be okay?
Can you start over and repeat what you were saying about the comparison? Because I don't know if you've seen this, we have a document in front of us that they talk about how many truck trips per day?
It does, it does seem like one panel per truck is probably not quite the, the right number. I mean...
We wouldn't be building sites if that was the case, so.
I mean, there are going to be a number of panels that could be delivered on one truck.
We've gotten to the point where they double stack the panels. Could be a box truck or tractor-trailer. We try to do it to minimize logistics costs, obviously, so it really depends on what's available in the market from the logistics provider, too. But that's our preference, to stack the trucks to the gills to minimize the trips and get them unloaded as quickly as possible. And we typically do one to two trucks per day, depending on site conditions, sometimes more. It all depends, really. In this case, though, a straight shot right into Lambert, you know, it's a lot easier than going off of Brooks, so we're not really anticipating it being a significant backlog of trucks in the, you know, in the little streets surrounding. So, I mean, what we put in our plan is what we're fairly certain, because it's a data point we've used from a project in Carver recently, on a cranberry block facility, which had a lot more challenging access conditions, but we staggered the trucks and staged them accordingly.
As a follow-up, I'm going to read to you what, what they're giving us for a document and for those that live in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Up to five truck deliveries per day are expected during the peak construction period, which will begin with a period of approximately, a period of approximately five weeks for clearing. So that's five trucks per day for five weeks, followed by a period of approximately six weeks for delivery of solar racking equipment. On average, three truck deliveries per day are expected during these periods. Now, the sizes of the truck are important, because it says, you know, the largest truck for clearing operations will have a 53-foot truck bed, and the largest truck for racking deliveries will be 60 feet from axle to axle.
I mean, that's, I'm not going to argue with that. I'm just going to say that this is what was in a court case, and that was submitted as an estimate from a solar company, so. And this was like for a 6.5-acre site, one, one megawatt. So I just don't think that number was inflated if a solar company submitted it to the courts. Like I said, I know there's nothing I can do about this, but we can try to mitigate to the most possible extent this neighborhood and the impact on this neighborhood.
Unfortunately, the state has tied our hands.
I understand that, but there are things that we can do, so.
I believe there was a legal ad I saw. When is the MIPA Zoom meeting?
24th at 6:00 p.m. online.
Okay, so the 24th Zoom meeting for everybody that can join. MIPA looks at a greater array of things, and I don't know if their hands are tied compared to ours. You know, we can't, we can't deny solar projects at this time. We can only condition them as best we can, but MIPA looks at other environmental impacts. And, and, you know, that's why I would bring your concerns beyond our control.
I understand. So I did have some other questions. Did you want to see these pictures, just so they would be in the record?
Sure, yeah, okay. You can submit them for it.
So this is what the road looks like now. This is all on Park Drive. But this is the very bottom, which there's only four houses that are accessing that, so that is all from the trucks.
The Park Drive project, do the trucks run a certain route, or do they come from all different directions?
Ah, they mostly come off, I'm going to assume, Acushnet Avenue, down Lucia, and then down straight, down Park Drive. So I just wanted also for the record, I would hope that you would consider these conditions to be added. Prior to the project closeout, a full-depth reconstruction of the roadway will be required as approved by the DPW, because we know the roadway is going to be demolished. The owner-operator shall be responsible for cleanup of any silt or debris on the roadways that may wash out, that may wash out from or be tracked out by equipment during construction or post-construction. I believe that's currently condition of the 26th on the special permit. Sweeping of the roadways will be at least weekly or as often as needed. Has this been peer-reviewed?
The plans have been peer-reviewed, yes.
Has this plan been peer-reviewed?
This plan is, the, the only reason they're in here is for the new entrance, so we're really, our focus can only be on the amendment request, because the rest was approved by, well, three of us were on the planning board when this thing was approved.
Yeah, this is approved back in 21.
I don't even know the history.
But has this plan been...
Those plans have been approved.
Have this...
Just that little section, yes.
Is the access peer-reviewed?
Just, just the Lambert Street section has not. That's what...
Is that going to be done?
I don't think it requires a peer review.
I'd say the residents of that neighborhood would disagree with you. It always is a good thing to have another set of eyes on it.
But it's basically just the buildup of a road that we approve all the time. But it's basically just the buildup of a road that we approve all the time.
So will the fencing for the panels have a wildlife gap?
Fencing for the perimeter of the whole solar field?
Wildlife gap on the bottom, you're asking? Yeah, that's standard.
Okay, just. And is there going to be lighting on the site?
No, there's no lighting.
Okay.
There's no need for it.
Will the driveway on the access road be gated?
Yes, it will.
And is there going to be screening of material on the site?
Um, no, we're not planning to. I mean, maybe some topsoil will respread on-site, but we're not going to be operating the site as a transfer station and screening material and haul it elsewhere, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, and what are the hours of construction going to be?
If they did have to remove any soil, they'd have to go through the soil board to get permitting for all that.
Hours of construction?
And aligned with the town ordinance.
Well, I, I think that.
I mean, the deliveries, they're, they're proposing a certain delivery schedule right now within certain hours.
Right. The delivery schedule.
Yeah.
The delivery schedule they have here, seven a.m., let's see, let me see. Let me see, deliveries will occur on weekdays and will occur within the following time window. Seven to seven-thirty, nine to three, four to six. Events will be made to perform deliveries between nine to three, with occasional deliveries in the seven, seven-thirty, and four to six windows. I don't know if I'm on board with six.
I mean, at this, at this point, too, I mean, we're only reviewing that three-hundred-foot strip along Lambert Street.
You're modifying the permit and you're modifying the conditions.
Only to the extent that they are proposing a different access point to the, to the, to the project.
Those are, okay, so there is already case law that, given the access as roads importance, importance to the primary solar energy collection system, this was in Lexington, it will facilitate the primary system's construction, maintenance, and connection to the electrical grid. We conclude that the access road is part of the solar energy system. So they're one and the same. It might be the road, but it's attached to that permit that you've already granted. You're going to have to modify those conditions because some of them are changed now.
I don't disagree with that. I, I think that we should all review the conditions of approval from the current approval and add or subtract or change anything that needs to be changed. And vote at that on the conditions at another meeting. But not, you know, we don't have them in front of us right now. But I, I wouldn't, you know, it's one thing to vote to approve, subject to conditions, and we can vote the conditions at a later date, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, that, that's fine with me. Again, you know, this is, to me, this is just additional, additional restrictions on development. Now, we have a route for the trucks. We've got, we will have a number for the police to call if there is a problem with the trucking. The trucking is only supposed to happen within certain hours. I mean, all of these things would be a condition of the modification. In terms of things going on, on the site itself, I don't see that those are going to be any different. You know, I mean, decommissioning costs, you know, all that.
I agree, I agree on the decommissioning, but I have no idea what the conditions were. And if I'm voting to amend a permit, I wasn't a part of the original. I'd like to take a look at them.
Sure.
And, you know, maybe the hours of operation are not acceptable to me. I don't know. I see they're trying with the truck, but there's also onsite construction activity that's different, that should be different than these hours. I don't, I don't think people should be hearing construction activity before eight o'clock in the morning or after five, you know.
Well, that's, that's dependent on whatever the town law says.
Yeah, that's not for us to decide. That's for every right of every contractor to start at what the town permits, and I'm pretty sure that's seven o'clock.
Is it?
Yes.
Pretty standard.
Pretty standard, through towns at seven o'clock. Now, the end time, I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure on. But I don't know if we have the right to tell people when. Just, that's already something, that's already in.
Yeah. But again, I have no idea what the premise is.
Agreed, because that permit was approved and issued prior to, like you said, three of us being on the board. So we did not.
The approval is in that bundle that we submitted.
That's what I.
Do you want to take the time and go through every one? Well, I'm, I interrupted, but the speaker still has the floor. I'm sorry.
The only other thing, question I had is, what will happen to broken or damaged solar panels?
They get recycled and disposed of. There's companies we deal with.
Is that like immediately?
Well, what is your concern?
That they be on the site, just stored, piled on the site?
We don't store damaged equipment on-site. Whenever the site is turned over, all debris will be removed.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a quick question.
Please.
You guys already have your permit with EverSource? In other words?
Oh, yeah, we pay a hundred percent of our deposits.
No delays with studies that they have going on with other projects?
No, we're clear of every study. Made all our payments, have equipment procured.
You need to get the interconnection agreement.
Yep, signed, paid for.
Anybody else out in the audience that would like any questions? Is there anybody on Zoom that has any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Jeff Broloff. I'm actually outside counsel to St. Carfa. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the meeting live tonight. But I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to raise it, but since you've turned to the Zoom world, I thought I would speak up now. I just had, just two quick comments on the procedural issues. Just with respect to the modification request, I just wanted to make it clear, and some of you have articulated this. A modification request doesn't reopen the entire permit to revisiting permits that don't apply to this Lambert Street modification request. So obviously, if there are conditions in the 2021 approval that relate to Brooks Avenue and they would no longer apply because St. Carfa is looking to use Lambert Street instead, then it would be appropriate to drop that permit. But a modification request isn't an opportunity to just revisit conditions that were imposed in 2021 and have nothing to do with the Lambert Street or Brooks Avenue part of this. So I just wanted to make that procedural point. And then I wanted to point out that in Weston Sampson's cover letter, which I think is in front of you, on the bottom page, there actually is a condition that they proposed there, which reflects the fact that there is MIPA review, Army Corps review, and other permitting that still needs to be undertaken with respect to the Lambert Street route. And we had proposed a condition in Weston Sampson's letter right before the signature line, which basically says, if St. Carfa is not able to secure all the permits it needs for this Lambert Street route, or if it's able to resolve the legal disputes with the neighbors on Brooks Avenue, it wants to retain the right to utilize that previously approved access route. They're not planning to do that right now, but they don't want to secure a modification for the Lambert Street route and have that somehow invalidate the ability to go Brooks Avenue if they can't get the permits for Lambert Street or if they're able to resolve those things. And then we included in this proposed condition a requirement that if either of those two things happen before they actually proceed with that work, they would have to provide notification to the board and also to the Brooks Avenue residents. So I just wanted to point that out as you're considering conditions for any, any potential approval here. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Special permit approves the plan, original plan, and also approves the original access was Brooks.
Correct. It's active right now, it's valid.
Okay. But they came back in front of us to get approval of the construction of Brooks Ave. And we've never given approval of the actual construction of the access road because of the issues with the budding neighbors.
Well, no. The construction through Brooks Ave was approved through the original special permit. They came back to us to amend it because.
They didn't have the forty feet.
Legally, the owner next to, knows half of it, says, I'm not letting you use it. So they needed to modify the entrance, the use of the, the entrance road down to a twenty-foot swath.
And within that twenty-foot swath is also the neighbor on the right side is also complaining about two to four feet that is supposedly.
There's some sort of discrepancy.
Some kind of discrepancy, allegedly discrepancy.
So they, so they applied for amendment. They could withdraw and, and move ahead with Brooks, but if they cleared up their legal action.
So even though Brooks is on the original plan, are they actually, they're not approved to use Brooks? They can't go get a building permit using Brooks at this time?
I think they can.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the way, the way it's postured now is that St. Carfa has all the local approvals it needs to actually go ahead with the work on Brooks Avenue. But if they wanted, if they attempted to do that, they would expect a land in court. The neighbors would come in with their, with the legal disputes that they've already articulated to St. Carfa, and they would stop the activity. So.
You're correct.
It's not a question of having to get any more local approvals. It's just a question of resolving those legal disputes. But I don't want this discussion to suggest that St. Carfa is still trying to do that. I mean, St. Carfa has come up with a really good alternative to Brooks Avenue, which is this Lambert Street route. If they can get through MIPA and get the Army Corps permits and your approval to go Lambert Street, that's the route that they plan to undertake or use. The point of including this request for this condition is just to address the possibility, or there are really two contingencies here. One is they might not get Army Corps approval, or they might not get through MIPA, or there may be some other obstacle, in which case they, they would have to resort to Brooks Avenue, understanding that to do that, they would also have to resolve the legal disputes with the neighbors. So they just didn't want this, if the board's inclined to approve the Lambert Street alternative, they just didn't want that approval to somehow defeat the possibility to, to wipe out the approval that they had, that they had already gotten for Brooks Avenue in the event that that's the only option that's left to them.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
But are you asking, are you asking us to, to give you an approval for two different access points? And then you can pick at a later date however it works out?
Yep.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, that's how the condition reads. But again, I understand that that's, it's sort of an awkward posture, right? I mean, but basically what it's saying is, so if we didn't come in for any modification approval, we would be sitting here with approval for Brooks Avenue.
Correct.
That's our only option right now. We're looking for approval to have a better alternative, which is Lambert Street. And if we can secure the approvals for Lambert Street, that's the route St. Carfa is going to take. But if they can't get the Army Corps permit or some other permit for it, they don't want to have to come back to the board in that situation and ask for approval of an alternative that you've already approved. I know that some of you weren't on the board then, but Brooks Avenue route was already approved. We're proposing an alternative now, we're looking for approval of that, but not at the death of the first approval. So to some extent, yes. And again, we did propose specific language in the Weston Sampson letter so you can see what we were proposing there.
I seem to remember somebody presenting it to the board that back in May, Brooks Drive is off the table. We're not going back there anymore. We're moving on to Lambert Street. And we, we asked that question very clearly to the representatives. I don't remember who it was. But, you know, I look at it as, if we approve Lambert Street, then you're good to go for Lambert Street. If you don't get your approvals, because it's a roll of the dice on your part, you'd rather go through MIPA and whatever Army Corps rather than, than go to court and prove that you have the rights through Brooks. But if you have to go back to Brooks, you still have a legal issue that needs to be resolved. And I think that at that point, you should file an amendment to go back to Brooks. I, I'm not comfortable approving multiple access points. That just seems off to me, I don't know. I understand, I understand.
I totally agree with you that we would have to resolve, if we don't get an Army Corps permit for Lambert Street, let's just play that out, we know we would also have to resolve the legal issues at Brooks Avenue, right? And we, and that would be, you know, that's, that's an obstacle that still remains that we're hoping we never have to try to overcome because we're hoping that Lambert Street works. But if we have to, we don't want to also have to come back to the planning board and hope that the planning board is still willing to allow Brooks Avenue, where it's already done it. That, you know, planning board approval we have right now already approved Brooks Avenue. So we want to avoid putting up another obstacle that shouldn't be placed in, in that scenario where Lambert Street is shut down by a federal agency that we have no control of. We are.
But what happens if you, that scenario plays out? Army Corps turns you down. You go back to Brooks, you can resolve it on one half, but not the other. And now you're back to that amendment request. But you're saying.
Well, yeah, we have to resolve all the legal disputes there. If we, if, if we can't use Brooks Avenue the way it was approved, then we would have to come back to the board and get an approval for something different. The scenario, as I was trying to reserve the rights to here, is if we can't get the federal approvals and we would then have to go resolve all the issues on Brooks Avenue that there are. So that doesn't involve just one neighbor, it's, it's all of them. So we'd have to acquire easement rights or negotiate a settlement or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of different possibilities there. Again, St. Carfa is not, St. Carfa is hoping to walk away from Brooks Avenue. When they told you that that was dead and Lambert Street's the route they want to take, that was accurate, but subject to getting the permits, they need to use it.
Brooks Avenue, if that was, I wasn't on the board when he really approved that originally, but all of a sudden, there was legal issues that came up over Brooks Avenue, which the board, I'm sure, was not apprised of at all. So that was preempted. It was assumed that they, you know, that you had access through Brooks Avenue. And that was, I can't speak for the board at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I, quite honestly, I, I've forgotten exactly what access road construction was approved for that Brooks, that Brooks Drive access road. I mean, if, in terms of just anything happening on, on the Brooks Drive access, I'd say, you know, no. I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be the construction that was proposed on the original 2021 permit. Or you guys are going to have to come back for a modification. It's not just any access to, you know, along Brooks Drive. It's got to be the proposed and approved construction for that access that, that was granted in 2021. for that access that was granted in 2021. I mean, I certainly, I don't, I personally don't have any problem in taking that away. But in terms of a blanket, you know, well, if you don't get this one, then, you know, you can have access off the other street, you know, without any further planning board action. It's, it's got to be restricted to, like, again, the construction that was approved in 2021.
I 100% agree with you. We're not looking for anything else there. We just want to hold on to the approval that you previously issued. And the way this condition reads is, it does that. It references the Brooks Avenue route as previously approved by the planning board in its July 2021 decision. So you're right. If the resol, if that scenario plays out and we resolve something with the neighbors in a way that shifts the design, changes the design, I agree, at that point, we have to come back to the planning board so you have your opportunity to review it. My only point is, if we're stuck with Brooks Ave because we can't get this approved, Lambert Street approved, and we're able to resolve things so that we do have clear legal rights to build it the way you previously approved it, we don't want to have to come back for another approval in that scenario. So the way I drafted this condition covers the issue you just mentioned. And I 100% agree with you. And obviously, you're, you're authorized to, this is a proposed condition. If there's something about the wording that you don't like, or you want to add something to clarify it, that's your problem again.
They've already been approved for Brooks back in 21.
Yeah, I think it's
There's nothing saying that if they go to Lambert and that falls through, that we're going to
Then they, then they go back to the original approved construction.
Construction. Why would we deny what was originally approved back in 21? But if there's any modifications to that, then it would have to come back in front of us.
We had a whole lot of discussion when I was, when I was here regarding getting access in Brooks Avenue.
Right. Well, he admits there's a group of people here that would be fighting that. Regardless of what we decide, they still have to deal with the, with the residents.
I mean, a lot of the discussion was
Mr. Morad, you had your hand up?
Yes, can I speak from here? You want me to go to
No, you can just stand up and introduce yourself, please.
My boy, I have 41 Park Drive. I have both Brooks Ave. I just want to talk about, because Brooks Ave was brought up again. The original, I don't have my paperwork in front of me, but the original plan approved back in 2021 was a 40-foot entrance. That's the original plan, if you look at it. There's no 40 feet available there. There is a discrepancy between attorneys, if there's even 20 feet available there, due to what my attorney submitted about the statute, about me owning rights to the entire 40 feet, not just 20 feet. So if you want to talk about the original plan, it was 40 feet. So the original plan that if they want to try to get back in through Brooks has to be 40 feet. If not, you would have to approve a 20-foot, a 16-foot entrance. Back a year ago, we all met when they were still talking about going down Brooks. And I believe somebody went to the site. And then there was some land elevation issues. There were some tree issues that are, you know, right on Brooks Ave that were going to have to be the, well, the neighbor wasn't allowing them to be taken down. So there's going to have to be a way to grade around them or build up and all. Those things were never resolved. So, and the other point I want to make is, I don't think they should have access to points, to an entrance. I mean, if we're going to make approval for Lambert, we're going to make approval for Lambert, we're going to make approval for Brooks, we're going to make approval for Brooks. It sounds like if they get, say they get approval for Lambert, then they still have approval of Brooks on their 2021 approval. What stops the trucks from going down, going down Brooks? They have approval on both entrances. I think we need to say they're going to either go through Lambert, or they're going to go through Brooks. And as their attorney said, then there's going to be some legal ratifications about Brooks. But I don't think we should just say, okay, we'll approve you here and approve you here, and you choose which one you want to go in.
Well, like you stated, and I'm not a, again, I'm not 100% sure, but if you stated, and I believe you, if it's 40 feet, and that's what they got to prove for, then that's what it's got to, that's what they got to use. But like you said, we know that there's legal issues. They were going through the elevations, the trees, everything. I understand that. I understand all of that. That would all have to be resolved before they went and got a building permit. And then if we do approve Lambert tonight, or any other night, the approval that we gave back in 2021, that criteria is still, is acceptable. But they're not, and no truck will be able to go down there because there's no, there's no building permit that allows them to go down. There's no street there, you notice as well as I do, there's no street there. It's just, it's just grass. So I don't see somebody accidentally going down that access way. And you're right, if all of a sudden we approve Lambert and they hit a dead end with whatever other legalities they hit, they have the right to go back to what we already approved. I don't see the board not approving what we already approved back in 21. But it goes back to the 40-foot entrance. And then we rehash everything again from the beginning. If they do go back to, to Brooks, it starts from the beginning again. It starts with the access, the, you, your other neighbor, the trees, the elevation. It goes back to the beginning because none of that was resolved. That's when they gave up on Brooks and they went to Lambert. So in one aspect, I have to agree with this gentleman, that we can approve Lambert because what they're, what they're requesting isn't out of the, out of the norm. And I think, and even with some of the modifications of cleaning and making sure they're responsible for the cleanup and other criteria, we can approve Lambert. If something happens down the road, we've already approved Brooks. They can go back to Brooks, but it's the same one, 40 feet. So we're going to have to start from scratch again because they won't get a building permit with the way it is now because of the discrepancies.
Actually, no, I believe the attorney said they could apply for a building permit and obtain a building permit. But as soon as they go to break ground, then there'll be injunction, you know, somebody will file something in court, and then all of their efforts will fall by the wayside.
But even that, now, correct me if I'm wrong, even that, we never approved the modifications
No, it has to be per the plan. I agree.
Right.
I agree. I, this concept, I like this suggested condition run by town council. I'm interested not only if town council thinks it's prudent for us to approve two entrances like that. And number two is the word, the wording in here, when it comes to attorneys, my experience is one word means a different words placed. And I would, I would like to see the town covered, that this basically, because I'm in agreement, if it's the exact same approval, I would approve it in the future anyway, using 40 feet.
That's my point.
Any change is subject to scrutiny like we were in the process of doing back in May.
Correct.
But I don't know if, I'm not, I'm not all that warm and fuzzy about giving a multi-layered approval here.
It's going to be a condition.
If we, if we were going to go with this condition as a board, I think it really should be scrutinized by town council.
I do, I do think that we certainly could approve this Lambert Street access with the condition that only one access way will be allowed for construction. If they decide that they want to try to utilize the Brooks Avenue or the Brooks Drive access point, then it has to be done per the approved 2021 plan, period. And if they don't have the 40 feet and they've got to go to court, well, then that's what they've got to do. You know, that's a, but certainly we could approve this one, subject to the condition that only one access point will, to the project will be allowed from the town streets. So that if they use Lambert, they can't use Brooks. If they can't use Lambert, then, and they want to use Brooks again, well, then we're back to the 2021 approval. And if they've got any changes from that, they've got to come back here.
I'd like to see it rewritten.
Yeah.
Yeah, town council's
I'd like to see it rewritten with that on that.
I mean, that's fine with me. We're open to that, that text edit and suggestion. I can confidently say we're not intending to use two access points for construction. There's no accessory access. It's one or the other. Lambert is preferred.
Good.
And I, you know, I, I support this rerouting to Lambert Street. And I think it helps them in the MIPA process to have a planning board approval. So if we really want to see Lambert, I agree, we should approve the Lambert Street over the Brooks Street. This seems, this is just like a curveball thrown at me, so I don't
Yeah, I don't know that. I don't know that I, I'm with you on that. I'm not sure that I agree with the wording, the way it's been provided.
Yeah, to me, it's
But I certainly don't see any reason, I mean, I, in my own mind, it seems like Lambert Street's a better, a better access route. There's less, there's less town streets that you have to go down. And, you know, granted, it's only going to be a three or four-month period during construction. But I, I mean, personally, I like that access road better than trying to split between those two existing houses. And, you know, now you're playing around trying to keep people's yards from being damaged. And the right-hand turn out of there was tough anyway. You know, I, I do think Lambert Street's the better way to go. I, I do not have a problem with this Lambert Street access, as long as the understanding is they can only use one access point. But I still think this should, I still think this wording should be, I'm agree with you. I mean, I said it right from the beginning, that Lambert Street was the better route to get in there. But they're providing the condition, not us in this case.
Well, you don't have to, we don't have to read that. We can make our own decisions. We can do our own. We don't have to read what they provided us.
Yeah, we welcome your feedback on how you want it to be written, but I think we have a general understanding of the logistics of this, so.
They're not arguing the points that we're making.
Something's got to be added. And at the end of the day, it's only
It's only one.
It's only one.
Only, only has to be the exact approval using a 40-foot
2021, yes.
I meant to include that detail as part of my presentation. I apologize if I delayed 20.
And again, you presented a very good presentation. You gave us history, everything that, even the, the path, the route to go in, everything's been done as we've asked. This, this little paragraph that you got on the back is a suggestion that you would like us to read. We don't have to. We don't have to read what you wrote here. So none of this matters. We can make the motion the way we want, and that's how it would be written.
Well, it's either we ask town council to rewrite that or scrutinize it, or we strike it all together, the whole concept. I don't want to, I don't want to make a motion to approve a project and then reword that myself.
I will entertain
I don't want that responsibility.
I will entertain a motion to continue this meeting until our next meeting, which is November 2nd, to give town council time to look over and make sure it's what we need to say. Please.
Well, I, I think we could make a motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, if we make a motion to approve the project, but not approve the conditions until we have council look at this, and then we add, if we're not changing conditions, we are adding a couple that were spoken about earlier. You know, a lot of times, like the Conservation Commission, they have closed a public hearing. They have so many days to issue a decision. We do too. We can take up the conditions at a next meeting and just, you know.
So it's a continuation of this public hearing to the next, no?
No, what I'm suggesting is
But you can actually close the, close the public hearing and then do the conditions or, you know, fine tune the conditions
Right.
At a, at a later meeting. Like he says, Conservation does that all the time.
And I don't think there's a change.
I'd like to
It's up to you. I mean, you want to keep it open and just continue. I'm okay with that too.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak, please?
I would just want to counter to the attorney's opinion. My town council, also your town council, would tell you that there's no such thing as a modification to a special permit, and that it is okay. When you're, when you do it, you're taking everything from the original and incorporating it into another permit. So for him to say that you can't look at it, and I really don't think that's fair, because a lot of the residents were never notified. This was during COVID. I don't think anything that I said was unreasonable. And if SNCARPA is so good to work with, they should say, yeah, fine, that's not a big deal. As I stated, I know that you can't stop this. But if you're going to shove us residents a crap sandwich, at least you can make it as palatable as possible. And I seriously recommend
Ma'am, ma'am, I got to say, I do object to somebody saying that this board is trying to serve the residents a crap sandwich.
No, not you.
That, that, I think is out of order, to be quite honest with you.
And if this wasn't a solar project, if this was a development and there was going to be houses built back there, we still couldn't stop it. It'd be 10 times worse.
No, I understand you can't stop it. But my point is to try to mitigate it as much as possible. Like, do you want thousands of trucks driving by your house? Like, they're destroying our property.
Again, I've got to say, we've had a few of these projects in town. I, I have not seen any of the solar projects that have been constructed to date generate thousands of trucks of traffic.
Well, I'm just going by
I, I, I understand that. I understand what you said before. I also doesn't make, I'll be honest with you, it does not make sense to me that we're going to have one panel delivered by one truck. That, that just, that defies my sense of logic. I In terms of the approval of the project, it's happened. They like to change their ac, their access point. I don't think that that's a big deal. I really don't. I don't see why we can't approve this modification, subject to conditions and review of those conditions by town council. I would, I would make a motion that we approve this Lambert Street modification, not as, we approve the Lambert Street modification, subject to the condition that only one access point to this project is allowed under the special permit modification, subject to conditions to be developed at our next meeting.
Is a motion.
And when is our next meeting?
November 2nd.
Are we leaving the public hearing? Well, so that we'd be closing the public hearing? If we're going to vote on the project, subject to conditions being issued.
If we close the public hearing, then the public is done.
Yep. And it's just develop the conditions for this Lambert Street access.
I don't want to close the public out if we're going to discuss further.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion. You, you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
No, actually, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing
Okay.
So that town council can take a look at the suggested condition. And I think all, maybe all of us can look at the conditions that were previously approved and see if there's anything you want to tweak. Or we've talked about a couple to add, you know, damaging properties on them. Somehow we write that in there and that they provide a 24/7 contact Somehow we write that in there and that they provide a 24/7 contact number to the police chief. And I'm interested in, in the comment about damaged road. If we end up with a road, you know, let's just say Lucia Street, is it? All of a sudden, we got 10 more cracks in the road, right, you know? And, and it's during the construction phase caused by, you know, it's clearly going to be caused by a 60-foot tractor trailer truck, not a Volvo or something, you know? So I think we ought to consider that. I don't know if that's legal or not.
Yeah, I mean, how can you, how can we go back and say, hey, San Carre, you're, you're damaging this road? When you have Brooks Drive right down the street? You got other people jogging up and down the street. How can we just say, hey, you guys are responsible for that extra crack? You can't do that. It's a public road. Now, if they go in and a trailer or a backhoe or something rips up a big old chunk of asphalt, now there's a big old pothole, well, now they're responsible. But you got, you got Brooks Drive, which is, yeah, they're still going through their issues. But once that gets done, you're going to have a gazillion trucks going in and out of there. And they're going to, they could be using the exact same access road. And then they're using the public road. If it was a, and if they damage it, well, if it's something that's substantial, yeah, they're going to fix it. But if, if we're going to go there and by these pictures start counting cracks in the road and saying, hey, there's five extra cracks, you're responsible? In my opinion, that's going a bit far.
All right, I will, I'll second the motion that we continue the public hearing to our, our next available meeting. What, you know what the date is?
November 2nd.
November 2nd. Subject to review of the special condition by town council.
We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We never even closed out the public. Can I get a motion to close out the public portion, public hearing portion of this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we all on the same page?
Yeah, we are. We're looking forward to working on the conditions.
Thank you. This is a continuation, before everybody leaves, so we don't get yelled at next time. This is a continuation to a public hearing. You will not be notifying at your next, for the next meeting. They've already sent out their notifications. This is just a continuation to November 2nd. So you're all aware, they will not be sending out notifications. Okay.
Chance you can have Paul send us the conditions.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And you're right, that's a good point. I never read through the, we, the three of us were on the board. I never read through this. I actually picked this up. So, yeah, I'll have Paul send out the original. Okay, can I get a motion to we close the public hearing and go back to regular meeting? Yeah, okay. Discussions and other topics. Plan review and solar special permit 540 on Main Street, cushioned mass, the engineers, Atlantic Design Engineers. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, parting ways building 130 Main Street, this floor during regular business hours. The proponent has established a decommissioning plan estimate, a decommissioning plan estimate for review by the board. The proponent has updated information to share with the board regarding the ESOs interconnection plan. Excuse me. Please introduce yourself and who was yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Brandon Reali from Atlantic Design Engineers. I'm repertory setting catalyzed for the 3.97 megawatt DC solar installation at 540 on Main Street. Again, this is similar to the last one in the sense that this is a previously approved project, which special permit and stormwater management permit were approved July 5th, 2021. And as part of that approval, we have submitted a decommissioning estimate in order to, down the road, get a, go forward with the building permit. So our, our decommissioning estimate proposes to dismantle and remove the proposed estimated three, uh, 7,358 modules and central inverter for battery energy storage systems and additional components that include production monitoring system, a transformer, security fence, electrical conduit, and also regrade, vegetate, and erosion control for the site during the removal process. Our estimate was based on prevailing wages and estimated time, our fees for timing materials. And we also applied a 2.5% inflation rate over 20 years, which is the general lifespan of a similar project. In addition to the decommissioning estimate, we also provided an estimate for salvage value. The three components that we'd be salvaging are the steel, copper, and aluminum, which are the primary components of the wrapping system and the electrical conduit. So that was deducted from the estimated decommissioning estimate, which gives a future amount, a decommissioning estimate, with a salvage value of $273,839.
If I'm not mistaken, we do not accept salvage value calculations.
We have not in the past.
Okay. So I did look at, when I was putting this together, I did look at the, what you had in the bylaw. And I did not see any mention to not applying salvage value. That's definitely something that we can.
We, it's just, it's just very difficult to know in 20 years where that's going to be. So we, Paul, our clerk, did his quick numbers here as well. And he came up with the same number, more or less, I think it was $2 off, with a 20-year, 2.5% inflation. He came up with the same 467,000.
Okay.
So that's, that's the number that we're going to go with. We're not using salvage value at all.
Would that be assuming that you would be the ones to take it out, though?
No, the, the salvage value, you mean? Or the, the final decommissioning?
It's, it's hard, it's hard to predict. We have not allowed salvage value as part of the, as part of the decommissioning cost in the past.
Understood.
Yep. We have it in others and the ones that we just approved. And we're not, and maybe that should be something that we put into the bylaws. So it's clear, we, we don't.
Okay. And I believe the applicant is okay with that. I believe they should, it looks like he is on the call. So he's, I'm sure can answer that if, Ed, if he can join.
Yeah, I'm here, thanks. I apologize for not being there. I'm a little under the weather yesterday, today. So we should take the Zoom option. We're fine with that. That, that's, that's fine with me. We're, we'll, we'll, we'll put up a, a bond for the full amount of the total debt.
And we have had a, a form of a bond previously approved by town council and the, not the town accountant, Jamie.
Administrator.
The town administrator, that we would expect to see a bond in that form.
Okay.
With the escalation clause prior to grant of a building permit.
Can we get that information from Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have our council look it over and we'll, we'll get that squared away.
And if I'm not mistaken, this still has to go through peer review.
Yeah, as far as I know, all of the past.
All the past has to go through peer review.
Okay.
Paid by, paid for by you.
Yep.
Now, the question I have is, I mean, when was the last time we had peer review done? Have we switched engineers?
We, we at the moment have, who did Paul say we got? Field is doing, we're waiting for field engineering right now on the four systems over on Wing. Is it Wing Road? The four, the, the, the first one that we had, which was a disaster and was.
Oh, yeah, 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 there's three of them.
There's three of them. They started out with a cash bond and they put in a cash bond. So now they're trying to switch that over to, oh, not a cash bond. Yeah, it was a cash bond. Now they want to go to.
Yeah, cash.
Yeah, sure. Cash and surety, thank you very much. Now they're going to go to a bond. But because it's so old, they're getting re-looked at again by field engineering. So we could use Field. There's SW call that's done for us in the past as well.
I'm very comfortable with Field.
Okay.
They have a lot of experience in it.
Okay.
We would have to get a.
That's what we're waiting on now is a quote on, and we're waiting for that, for that other project is a quote for how much they're going to charge for.
Okay. So maybe Paul can contact them about this one?
Yep.
And then Paul could let them know what the fee is?
Yep.
You guys are familiar with the whole process?
Yeah, yeah. So within the conditional approval, based on the peer reviews response, probably we have to come back for another meeting after the peer review.
That's, we can, we can approve, well, first.
Yeah, refresh me, where, where are the projects at?
This is the one off of.
No, not where it is. I mean, as far as permitting, is it that they are, they, they already approved, got approved for site plan back in 2021, similar to the last project?
Yes.
But they haven't squared this away in order to go for building permit?
Yes, this was a condition of the special.
And what's your information on the ESOs interconnection?
That, that's something Ed can throw you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we got some pretty good news. And the substation that we're interconnecting to, which is located over on Wing Lane, is actually number two on their upgrade list. And so they've placed, or at least they've told us, they've placed major orders or orders, orders for major components with an expected delivery by Q2 2025, with the hopes, and you know, this is just me kind of reading, reading between teams here, of a C O D by the end of that year. So what that means from a timing perspective is that with the previously approved entitlements and the 2024 expiration date that, that we've been told is, is the case now, we shouldn't require any additional extensions or anything like that. So we're, we're good to go and we'll, we'll continue to advance the project as approved. You know, the, the way it is. And, you know, hopefully we'll, you know, be able to get everything squared away quickly.
So they do fall underneath that new three-year.
Right, right.
So their special permit expires August 20th, 2024.
Okay, you guys think you're going to break ground by then?
No, we'll have our permits and we'll probably mobilize next fall just to tie it around the, the deliveries and the upgrades, just so it's not sitting out there, you know, without, without a place to put the power.
So next July, you'd ask for an extension?
No, next July, we would have already applied for the building permits. And then we'll mobilize sometime in the, within the next couple of months after that.
Okay.
And what's our building permit?
The special permit says that there will be no cutting between what months?
It's November 1st. I forget what the end point is. Yeah, March, maybe.
It might be.
Actually, it's, it's one of the conditions in there.
Yeah, look through this. But I just wanted to bring that, make sure that you're aware that there will be.
You can't clear cut between November 1 and, because it says you can't hydro seed. And we had issues at another site. Is this mostly a field, though?
Yeah, it is. It's got, it's got, probably there's an apple tree still, there's the old apple orchard. So, but they got some stuff to clear out towards the wood line, I believe, if I remember looking at, if I remember.
Right, if it is a field with hay and grass and they go and clear cut all that and it's just dirt like Butch McCall it was, then the water's just going to flow.
Yes.
So we got to make sure that.
You might want to just plan that accordingly. If you have an active permit, maybe it's wise to cut all the apple trees and, and loam and seed it in the spring and have, have a, you know, growth there so that you don't have.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the previous, the previous site that we had so much trouble with, it wasn't just that they cleared the trees. They stripped all the topsoil and they took the trees out. And it was a raw site open to erosion and it eroded. No, the grass on that orchard right now is probably neat, neat, deep over there. Because it hasn't, it really hasn't been kept at all.
I, I haven't been over there in a while.
It's not just, it's not just the clearing of the trees. It's, it's the stripping of the soil in November. So the erosion happens all through the winter and the springtime.
Right.
Now, are there any conditions with conservation regarding a list of steps when before construction actually starts? In between, and being, and you being required to notify conservation of every step?
I'm sure there are. There is a word of conditions with it, so I'm sure that's laid out in there and I'll know the specifics of it. But as far as concerned for erosion and erosion control, you know, the building permit, the SWP, that lays out exactly what steps that the clearing happens. And one of the first steps of that is applying erosion control. And if there's, as you mentioned, that there's a date, you know, time that clearing cannot happen, obviously, it's not going to happen in that timeframe.
Do you have a stormwater permit for this project?
Uh, this, I believe so, because I have from the order of conditions on here that it was approved for special permit stormwater management permit on July 5th, 2021.
Back in 2021?
Yeah.
Oh, so to answer this question, I, I think that once we get a, a letter from, say, field engineering telling us that the, they agree with it or it's tweaked and whatever, I don't think there's a need for you to come back. You know, burn a whole night just sitting here listening to something else and, you know, because I, it's, you know, we just, we just need to have our peer review person. And that number looks.
Yeah, I mean.
It looks good, but I don't want to.
This is not a $20,000 dollar number on this new project. I don't know how you put, I don't even know how you put a number to this. I gotta, just want to ask you, just a question for information. If we're, if a solar field right now were to get decommissioned tomorrow, where would all those panels go? Just.
That's, I mean, that's an emerging market right now. We have so many projects that, that are coming, you know, to a point where that you will be getting closer to decommissioning phase. And there's, there's companies popping up left and right that are taking those panels and recycling it. There's a lot of raw material, you know, the, the metals and minerals in there, very similar to like, you know, components in a computer that, you know, can be recycled. And it's kind of, you know, just one panel, you're not getting a lot out of it. But if you can get thousands and thousands of panels and recycle that, especially with the way things are going and the cost, it will be a good market in the next.
Yeah, I figured somebody would figure out.
Now, we didn't include the recycling of the panels because that's just an unknown. So that did not, I mean, again, that we're not using the salvage value, but we didn't include any salvage of the panels. We just included the disposal costs to transport them offsite. But that will definitely be something in the future that, you know, will, you know, obviously, either way, if salvage is included or not, that would be something that whoever is doing the decommissioning will be able to utilize is recycling them.
So when you say you have some, a bunch of projects coming up on what, the 20-ish?
I just meant in general, just in the United States, the way that solar has grown in the last, you know, 20 years, a lot of the projects are coming up, you know, are halfway, are coming up. So you're going to have a bunch of projects all over the United States that are going to need to be decommissioned. And there would be thousands, hundreds of thousands of panels that people will be looking to recycle. Even in some cases, you know, depending on the cost of materials, we'll be paying to get the panels so that they can recycle them and sell the materials over.
So did I, I just, just to recap, interconnection, did I understand, two of 25?
I thought you said the full.
Ed, you still there?
Full 25.
Yeah, Q2 of 25 is when they're expecting to have a major audit delivered with the first operation by the end of 25.
Okay, commercial by the end, okay.
Yeah, hopefully. But I'm going to sign it off with them next week. So we're going to start getting into the, the site planning and everything like that without.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No, just let's have Field do the peer review and we'll go from there. No, just let's have field do the peer review and we'll go from there.
We got a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, just continue the matter until we get a, a peer review done by field engineering and then we can take action on it.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night. All right. Current planning, we have no town planner. Long-range business, we have none. Nothing other business, nothing has come before us in the last 48 hours. And our next meeting is Thursday, November 2nd. Anything else, anybody else wants to discuss? We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.